Call a meeting to order at six o'clock. All council members present except for councillor Hutton with absent with notice. Ken, may I fire chief Matt Fieldman and Dale Rhodes patrol officers Nina, Mover and Seconder Gary, seconded by Derek on favor, carried. Next on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Any additions? If all is good, I'll read the resolution. Three, two, three, being resolved at the meeting agenda for regular council meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as presented, mover and a seconder. Ken, seconded by Gail, on favor, carried. Approval of previous minutes. Any questions? Read resolution three, two, four, being resolved at the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of council, August fifth, two thousand twenty-five be accepted as presented, mover and a seconder. Derek and Gary, on favor, carried. Number four, delegations Margaret and Brian Zell. Did you want to come sit up on a chair or whatever?
Like what word would you like me to say?
You could be right in here, it's fine.
Pull another one up, Margaret. Do you want to come around to your Margaret?
I can move down here.
Sit that in there. You're welcome. Yep, you can go ahead and go with yours.
So yeah, I'm here to help my mother. She has an issue that she wanted to present where in the quick summary is that in two thousand twenty-three, the taxes were, I guess, there was an amendment coming for the taxes. So she didn't pay right away and she talked to the the at the time Trevor CFO, CFA or whatever it is. And he said, no problem, everything's gonna be fine. But time passed and apparently a lot of time passed and interest accrued. So she she hadn't paid and this interest, by the time it came, there was about four hundred dollars of interest. And now it's kind of a mess. She doesn't really want to pay because she doesn't want to pay the interest. And if it's paid, like there's a debate about the interest at the bottom line because she feels that she doesn't like she didn't pay it because she was unable to because there was an amendment coming past Trevor's state. But it never came. And so that's really the only issue. And they, you know, piled up twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, because I don't think it happened till twenty twenty-four. The twenty twenty-three amendment didn't come for a year later.
Over a year later. It sat on the desk. And when I came and talked to Trevor, he said, well, we didn't get the paperwork. I challenged him on that because I called the assessment branch before I came in to talk to Trevor. And that is the amendment to the reassessment reached this office on September seventeenth of twenty-three. And nothing was done about it. So when I kept coming in, we had didn't get the paperwork. And Danny said, we have it all here. He says, well, I'll take a copy anyhow. There must be a few copies in this office somewhere. I don't know where. But I have been in many times talking to Trevor. Absolutely no problem, everything will be taken care of. It was never taken care of. So you wouldn't even know about this had I not phoned in July before he left to see if he had taken, because he was going to bring it to council and have it all taken care of.
But he never did.
He never did do it. So I finally got the the amendment to the twenty-three taxes and he blamed it all on staff. There was no staff here, couldn't be done. Whatever, but I'm stuck in the middle. So in twenty, November of twenty-four is finally when I got the amendment to the twenty-three tax bill. And by that time, interest is accruing. I'm not paying it. I don't know why I would have to pay it. I've been looking after this for all these months and nobody's done nothing about it.
How much is the interest, Brad, like you lost?
Well, the last you saw officially was three eighty-nine.
Well, that just came on this new tax bill that I just got today.
Okay.
But it could, we're not sure what your system says.
It should be the same as that being that's current. Well, yeah, because that that's our
It'll be over four hundred, I'm sure.
That's our, your, this year's taxes now, it's showing arrears or whatever of
What you just got.
I just got this.
So it's probably the the right number.
This is three ninety-eight, it says on here. I just received this, I went to the assessment branch today. There is another reassessment done on the property. And it's been sitting somewhere here since July tenth. So, and
Oh yeah, three ninety-eight fifty-two. That's a little more than, I guess, we were talking about here, is that correct? Not that it matters.
No, no, I said four hundred in the beginning.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Four hundred in the beginning.
Yeah, three ninety-eight fifty-two, okay.
So I've been in many, many times about this with Trevor and got absolutely nowhere. And he, in February, he told me he was bringing it to the council meeting. Did you guys know about it? Probably not. Did he bring it to a council meeting? Okay. I'm sorry, but I've been trying to work this out.
So I'm not sure what the process is. This seems like an issue that wouldn't have to go to council. Right? Like normally this wouldn't this just go to the person running the office? I don't know.
No, it would have to go through council.
Oh, it would have, okay.
Usually for a lot of it does come to us, yeah.
He told me February, he was bringing it to council, he never did.
Okay, well, that's really the gist of like she she made a page about fee tails, which I don't know if you have a copy of or not, but
Just the form that you feel about.
But really, that's that's it in the essence. We would like the credit to be cleared up.
So when you said there was amendment coming, what was it for, like?
For this year?
No, for the twenty twenty-three amendment.
Because I, you can appeal what the assessment was. And I did that prior to, the taxes came late that year, of course. And because of the staffing is all
The office was closed.
And that's all I heard from Trevor was the staffing.
Yeah, the amendment, you were not in agreeance with the taxation, so you wanted it to reassess then.
Correct, I wanted to reassess it, which they did right away. And you know, that's that assessment then came in in this office on September eighteenth of twenty-three. And it wasn't addressed until November of twenty-four.
So just to make sure I'm clear, you're good with all the taxes that have been assessed, it's just the interest that's the concern.
I want to see interest right now.
Yeah, okay.
Four hundred dollars.
I want it. I don't want to see any interest on it.
I think we should take care of the interest is my thoughts on it.
I agree.
And make the matter right.
Thank you.
That's my personal thoughts.
I agree.
You still have, you still have seven minutes or whatever, if there's anything else you'd like to add.
Well, it's not with that, but I went to pay the water bill. Water bills are pretty high, but it says that Trevor is still the CEO on the on the receipts that are printed on, is that, should his name still be on there?
On their, on the official receipt?
On the receipt, the water bill receipt that I got.
His his initials are at the bottom of the receipt and we initial our initials over top. I don't know, I don't know the process to change it, but we can look into it.
It's in the program here right now, yeah. Yeah, that will be something we will change, but it's just probably wasn't a real high priority right at the moment here now with what's going on.
So the taxes for this year, there is an assessment coming on it. It will pay the full amount, but I was afraid to have the assessment come and then it all applied to the interest.
So yeah, when you're paying that bill minus the three hundred and eighty-nine dollars now.
Right.
That would be the way to do it, and then we will have to get rid of that three hundred and eighty-nine.
So then what happens with with the assessment when it comes in? What happens to that credit that's gonna, is it gonna be applied?
There's no credit, it'll just be, it'll just disappear, is what they're saying.
That, yes, the interest there. But your mother, I think, is talking from when the property got reassessed, the value is gonna be different, so the taxes.
Oh.
Just reassessed.
But the credit could stay on the system?
So I have another question, yeah.
Okay.
And the other question is when the tax bills come in, how is that entered, how is that data entry entered as interest or how do you, how do you say that it's a tax bill and that you're paying the taxes? How is a data entry made? That it is a tax bill? Instead, when I paid the last bill?
The government supplies those, Margaret. The municipality doesn't do up the tax bills, they come to us.
No, I understand that. But, Brian, just wait, where is it? When, when I made a payment the last time for the taxes, it went to arrears and interest.
Yeah, but it's not gonna do that anymore. Because because they're not gonna exist if if it's been proved.
Yeah.
They're gonna be gone, so there will be no way to do that.
I think Margaret's asking what account it would go in, fall into, I think is what you're asking, right?
It always takes the interest and the arrears off first because that's the whole just usually. That's the way the system is designed, take it. Yeah. So this will have to get this removed and then they'll pay what's just right. And then it'll be down to goose eggs.
So all the interest is gonna be gone, no matter what it is?
All of that interest.
All of this, the three ninety? There is no more than this.
No, that's as current as we can get, that just come out. Yeah, so that's three ninety-eight. Or, yeah, because that due date is September. Well, when we do it, we'll check and make sure it is taken. If there's a few dollars more, if the system calculates it, and I'm not sure, I'm not an expert, is it calculated daily or is it calculated monthly?
Per month.
Per month, okay. So we'll just make sure that there's, all the interest is gone and you'll just be paying your fresh taxes now.
Okay, sounds great.
Anyone else have any questions for regarding this?
That's in Margaret's meeting.
Yes.
Well, thank you for coming in and bringing your concerns and
Okay, thank you for listening.
Thanks for coming, thank you. If you want them to stay for the rest of the meeting, if you want.
If you want to be a councillor, you know, election's coming in about a year, so if you like the chair.
Well, it's pretty comfortable.
There you go, might have a candidacy. So thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Move to number five, fire protection.
I haven't called either of the four of us.
Has everybody had a chance to report? Yeah, we had, I guess it was just the three calls over the, since the last, last report. Again, training is ongoing at both halls and group that is still ongoing as well for both halls. With the focus on both of us. Any questions, everybody, for the report?
I just have one, Ken, not necessarily the report, but our last deployment north
Yes.
to up by Split Lake.
Yes.
Everybody was paid up on the department for the first two and not the last one, or how did that work, Ken?
The second one moved on to the second half.
Okay. Okay, I was just, I thought that kind of the cutoff was kind of in between there, so. Okay, no, just was wondering if I was thinking right on that mark, so, thank you. One more thing, Ken, any luck with the tire issue on the fire truck with the place we purchased it at?
I'm still waiting.
Waiting to hear back.
Yeah, I'm still waiting to hear it back. They just got back off their standard vacation that they take
Okay.
July, I guess it is, so.
Sure.
Yeah, so I talked to them last week, so.
Yeah, no, that's fair enough, that's probably the last time you and I spoke too, so. Okay, that's all I had, Ken.
Any other questions for Ken? Ken, for your report, and I'll read resolution three, two, five, being resolved at the fire protection services report, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, be accepted, mover and a seconder. Gail, seconded by Clint, all in favor, carried. Five point two, bylaw enforcement services report. Are you going to camera? Pardon me? Are you gonna go into camera? Yes, we can go into camera. That would be nice, thank you. Resolution three, two, six, being resolved pursuant to section one, five, two, three, municipal law council should meet as a committee of the whole to deplore a meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding investigation or enforcement of an act or bylaw. Pursuant to section eighty-three, one D, council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting close to the public under subsection one, five, two, three, until a matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section ninety-four, one H, a council member becomes disqualified for breach of the crime of confidentiality under clause eighty-three, one D, and time being six eighteen. Mover and a seconder, Gary, seconded by Derek, on favor, carried. Come out of camera, I'll read resolution three, two, seven, being resolved pursuant to section one, five, two, four, municipal law, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at seven or nine, moved by Derek, seconded by Ken, on favor, carried. Resolution three, two, eight, monthly bylaw enforcement services report, being resolved at the bylaw enforcement report, July two thousand twenty-five, be accepted as presented, mover and a seconder. Gary, seconded by Gail, on favor, carried. Five point three, RCP crime report. Any questions or comments on the report?
I don't know what the way it's going, it's climbing though, every month it looks like. Looks like traffic offenses were up from three to ten this month, between June and July. And other criminal activities, violating probation orders, disturbing the peace, et cetera, et cetera, is up from two to eight. So that's where the big gains were, in those two categories.
It's summertime, they're all coming out to play.
Will be reducing when it gets cooler.
When it gets cold, everyone will go back and up, I hope.
Happy to hear that, then I'm hoping, I'm thinking you're probably right. Because, yeah, it's pretty consistent in the cold months there, it looks like. It does pick up when it gets warmer, you're right, so.
Any other questions or observations on the report? Gary, none, I'll read resolution three, two, nine, being resolved up to July two thousand twenty-five, municipality municipal disposment, and Swan Valley region RCP crime statistics report, be accepted as presented, moved by Clint, seconded by Gary, on favor, carried. Number six, public utilities report. Chance to go over report, are there any questions for our public works department?
I'm just assuming it's supposed to say gravel hauling has resumed, not gavel hauling.
Well, it's full of gavel.
Yep.
Ah, that must have been, yeah.
Is this a typo?
A little typo, yeah. And for those of you that worked here earlier, the horizontal drilling over at Henderson's was finished one day.
Started and finished all in one day, that was nice.
No problems, yeah?
Nope, sounds like it went really well, so. Just needs a plumber now to turn the water off the curb.
That's good news, that went awesome. To get her done between nine thirty or ten when they started till five tonight?
Yep.
Good, great, thanks for looking out for that there, that was good, for sure.
But it was pretty easy to look after because I didn't really have to do anything with it, so.
It's just nice when they can do a job with those big babysat.
Yeah.
Like that company, yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
Minimal disturbance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly.
Well, you and I were talking one day, we're gonna try and compile a culvert order perhaps for some ones that we may be needing before fees up, right, Matt?
Yeah, I do have a list
Yeah.
in the shop.
That you're working on.
We've made a list of what we think we need.
Yeah.
But it's only about half a load.
Yeah.
So then I was telling you, I was talking with Eric at Swan Valley West, because they need a few things too.
Make it a paid trip.
He's supposed to get his list ready and then we'll make a load out of it and bring it all here. That's good.
Any success with highways in our street here?
They haven't returned my call yet. I will, I'll call Kelly again tomorrow. I give them a couple of days to call back. Call Kelly and ask again what's going on. He seems more than willing to to help with the issue, but he's got to talk to the right people and he's not doing it anywhere. And somebody named Clayton was supposed to call me back Monday morning and that never happened, so.
Yeah, we have a different fellow running the district now, or maybe we don't have a guy running it. The previous guy went to a different department there.
Kelly, I can't think of his last name, Marcus Hoff.
Oh, Kelly, okay.
He's the foreman there.
I see, okay.
Yeah, and when I talked to him the other day about who looks after what here, he didn't, he hasn't been, he hasn't been doing it long enough.
No, can't blame him, he's just doing the job.
It used to be highways and now it's our responsibility, but he doesn't know. And like I told him as well, I'm pretty sure it's not our responsibility, great, I don't think it ever has been, but but we've been the ones clearing snow all over the last, however long.
We had a little issue for several years.
So maybe if we can get back on the right pace, we're supposed to look after it, they can start doing that again too, you know? Yeah.
I did phone Rick Welch up just to see if I could get a number and Rick offered to just send a letter. So his office sent a letter as of Friday to highways wherever they sent it to get some answers, so.
That's good, because they are supposed to be taken care of, but as far as I know.
Yeah.
Good. I'm sorry, Larry, how much gravel hauling left do you have to do, Matt, roughly? Do you have any idea?
I don't know for for sure, but I'm gonna say that they're done on Riley's end of things.
Okay.
And I believe they moved into Pat, so there's probably, there's probably not much left, maybe a couple of days.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
And I did talk to them about those two spots that you talked to me last week.
Those small areas to add on.
Those won't be a big, a big job, but
No, those were, six loads probably total.
Yeah. But no, I would imagine they'll be wrapped up within a week.
Good. Good guy to be working with this softness now, too.
Well, actually, I had really good grading right now, too, with the roads.
It's very good, isn't it?
Where you can actually get the roads to pack down underneath you.
Yeah. Perfect, what do you call it, conditions?
So that's all I had. So we have any, any questions for our foreman, and I'll read the resolution?
I want to add one more thing while we're talking about that grader that's got the oil leaking back in. I don't think we're gonna do anything with it right now. It's not leaking again. It's been two weeks now since it's let drop out, so. I really think that seal was bothered by that plug breather.
Pushed by.
Comes and goes once in a while, but
Sure.
it's not leaking again.
So it's not leaking, I would say leave her until we notice something. Sure. Well, that's good news. Yeah, because it could build pressure in the case and push by.
Yep. Exactly, so until it becomes a real leak, I don't think there's any point taking it apart.
No, I would say not either. Good.
Thanks, Matt. I'll read resolution then, three, three, zero, being resolved at the public works and utilities report, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, be accepted as presented, mover and a seconder. Gary, seconded by Clint, on favor, carried. Number seven, we'll move into finance. Payment on the council table. Gary has gone through the if there's any questions, you can ask him.
Yep. Are we done with Matt, can he go or does he have to stay?
Yep, no.
Was there nothing in any camera from here on in?
But we won't go into camera for another hour.
Nothing for really pertaining to public works in there? Or?
No.
No, we're good.
Okay.
You're free to go.
I will get out of here then.
Go home and tinker.
I've spent enough time with the council team and that's
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Thank you.
Yeah, see you, Matt.
Yeah, I went through the tables. So if there's anything anybody isn't sure, I will certainly find an answer.
I just had one question
Yes.
for the shop on check number fourteen, three oh five. It says ten liters of fuel for thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. What kind of fuel are they buying for that price?
Oh, the second item there.
Yeah.
Pre-mix, maybe?
Because that's like, what, three bucks a liter, four bucks, three bucks a liter?
Yeah, we maybe we have to actually pull up the real slip and take a look here. I will see, do we have that package handy yet?
Sure.
I'll see if there's any attachment on there for that.
That was the only thing that I kind of noticed, what I thought was out. And that bridge is spelled incorrectly and minty's moving, but I don't think it's a big issue.
Oh, that one, I should maybe speak on a bit, we have to send that a money for them to actually do the inspection before they'll even come out. That's sending in advance, so they will come out and do the inspection, then give us the report. Because I was looking at the invoice, looking for the report, and the further I read, this is prepayments, they will come out, do the inspection, and then give us their findings. Because I had the question to myself when I'm looking at that today too, like, what is this about? Thank you, Sherry. I'll see what I can find on that one, that other one. Uh, 14305, we said, right? 3456. Oh, there's a can of Lucas additive on there for 1926, fuel was only 1299. That's why it's, yeah, the 10 liters of fuel are itemized, but there's a can of Lucas, one liter Lucas additive for almost $20, so that's what that's about.
Makes sense, yeah.
Thanks, Sherry.
Any other questions regarding financials? The payables, I mean. We're going to read the resolution then, 331. Read resolve that account table check number 14266 to number 14314, and the amount of $87,712.06 be accepted and approved as presented, move it second. Derek seconded by seconded by Gail, on favor, carried. Payment payroll. Any questions? Gary Nono, read the resolution 332. Excuse me. Read resolve that the payroll pay period 16, 2025, for the period from July 19th to August 1st, 2025, and the amount of $22,851.63 be accepted as presented and approved for payment, move it second. Ken seconded by Derek on favor, carried. The payroll sheets or whatever, did you use the timesheets and all that in in the office, for the employees? We were, we were getting them before we read, council member, if you still want to continue with that.
Well, we did get them in our email this time, it's gone in our printed.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, we wanted them in the print, oh, sorry, agent Ross.
We did get it in the email, yeah.
That's where I mostly check them over anyways.
Every once in a while, just have to do it that way.
Just leave them in the email then, perhaps, maybe a little less printing, a little bit more packaged? Because that's where I tend to review most of the stuff at home anyways. A little less work.
Year-to-date statements of the financial operations. Anyone have any comments on the on the operation, general operations? Ours municipality or whatever, we're pretty decent shape right now. Utility through the, both of the towns are, are good, they're blocked. Anyone have any questions? Read the resolution 333. Read resolve that the year-to-date statements of financial operations, general operations, January 1st to July 31st, 2025, be accepted as presented. Further, read resolve that the year-to-date statement of financial operations, Metropolis Utilities, January 1st to July 31st, 2025, be accepted as presented. Further, read resolve that a year-to-date statements of financial operations, Bosworth Utilities, January 1st to July 31st, 2025, be accepted as presented. Further, read resolve that account balances report, August 15th, 2025, be accepted as presented, move it second. Gary seconded by Ken on favor, carried. 7.3 banking fees for online banking.
Oh yeah, this is to add the the Royal to our list.
Yeah, correct.
If that makes sense, and we have all, our local banks, plus the one, the bank in Nova Scotia as well. What's that?
Said that we have CIBC and BMO, I don't know that we have those ones, Gail, they were just added for comparison.
Yeah, I would say being we have the, oh, on the second page, I'm sorry. I would say being we have the Royal Bank in Swan, we should be offering it as a way to have online business done.
Yeah, being that they close so early and all, but some people can't get in there to pay anything anyway.
All water bills and all the monthly ones now, that would certainly be nice to offer, all those services, I think. Excuse me.
Any other comments? None? I'll read the resolution 334, read resolve that municipality municipal disposment, approve the costs associated with adding the Royal Bank of Canada to our current list of participating financial as a vendor option for our rate payers, move it second. Ken seconded by Gail, Clint.
And Derek.
Anyone else?
We're all favored, too. Carry.
7.4 external auditor appointment.
Aren't they going to be starting for soon?
They never gave us a date yet.
Oh, this is for the 25, I'm sorry. We're waiting for, yes.
We're waiting for the 24, 23 audit to be done.
That's what they're, I think, we're looking at doing as soon as they advance, right?
Right.
Okay. Excuse me, I just noticed this is to 2025 to have them as our auditor, okay?
Resolution 335, read resolve that Myers, Morris, Penny, LP, be appointed at municipality of Metropolis disposment's external auditor for the 2025 fiscal year. Move it second. Gary seconded by Gail, on favor, carried. 7.5, monthly financial report.
Oh, there's the answer to that question, is
In the report?
Yes.
Do you want to do any highlights on the, on the report itself, Gary, or?
Um Whatever council wishes, I could, yeah. Did you want, did you want me to read the whole report, Larry, or not necessarily?
No, not necessarily, yes.
Okay, I'll just pick the highlights of it then. Uh, property taxes, I can mail them August 28th, I think a lot of people have theirs, I got mine yesterday already. Uh, deadline for payment, of course, September 29th of 2025. Rate rider for the utility has been suspended temporarily. Uh, 2023 year-end audit, the municipality continues to wait for M and P to advise as to the rescheduling of the audit onsite work. That was a question they had just a minute ago. The municipality continues to make progress on preliminary 2024 bank reconciliation work. And the 2024 fiscal audit will begin following the completion of the 2023 year-end audit. Now, municipal system upgrades, municipal financial project module update, in which financial module data is reviewed, evaluated, updated, and reorganized, the goal of improving and increasing efficiency and transparency of data management authority remains suspended.
Does anybody have any other comments, questions? I'm going to read resolution 336, read resolve that the finance report, August 19th, 2025, be accepted as presented, move it second. Derek seconded by Gary on favor, carried. Thanks, Gary.
No problem.
Administration. 8.1, property caveat removals. I think we discussed this before, council needs per caveat separate came in on late 50s, early 60s.
Yes.
Are there any questions or concerns on the removal of the caveats?
Well, we still need those last three up there.
Yeah. I'll read resolution 337. Read resolve that municipality Metropolis disposment, subject to there being no current road encroachment, remove the RM of Metropolis caveat on southwest corridor section 183825, caveat 23340-6. Northwest corridor section of 193825 west, caveat 246006. Northeast corridor section 193825, caveat 246346, move by. Clint seconded by Ken, on favor, carried. 8.2, administrative clerk, one position.
Is that going to be an after placement?
It's supposed to, once it's
Once we approve the position.
Yeah, I was told we needed a resolution to approve that position.
Oh yeah, that makes sense.
Then we can post, post the position, yeah.
Resolution 338, read resolve that the council municipality Metropolis disposment approve a new administrative clerk one position to the municipality Metropolis disposment organizational chart, move it second. Ken and Gary, on favor, carried. Monthly administration report. Any questions on the report? Hearing no questions or comments, we'll read the resolution 339, read resolve that administration report, August 19th, 2025, be accepted as presented, move it second. Derek seconded by Clint on favor, carried. And are there any announcements?
Um, no, I don't have anything, Larry, I haven't had any outside meetings, it's Thursday, I have a watershed. We're back in the routine. Usually July is tough.
Eric?
Uh, no, nothing I believe for me.
Nothing? Gail?
Um, I missed the COPP meeting on Wednesday, I was away for medical, so until I get a copy of the minutes, I'm, I just know that they've been awfully busy.
Ken?
I'm meeting with Gary on Thursday.
I have nothing. Sherry is busier than busy.
Putting mildly.
Putting it mildly, yes, she is. And then number 11, we'll move into camera again. Resolution 340. Read resolve that pursuant to section 1523 municipal act, despite subsections 1 and 2, council shall meet as a committee as a whole to close the meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employee land legal matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public would prejudice the municipality Metropolis with ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. Pursuant to section 831D, council members shall keep in confidence the matter discussed in the meeting close to the public under subsection 1523 until the matter is discussed in the meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section 941H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching the requirement of confidentiality under clause 831D. And the time being 7:40. And move it second, we're going to camera, Gary seconded by Gail, on favor, carried. Resolution to come under camera, number 341, read resolve that pursuant to section 1524 municipal act, this meeting shall be real to the public, move by. Resolution to come on the camera, number three four one, be resolved that pursuant to section one five two four municipal act, this meeting shall be real to the public, move by. Ken, seconded by Gary, on favor, carried. And time, nine o'clock. Meeting is adjourned, do they get a move or a second report? Ken and Gail, on favor, carried.